Are we ready? Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Law Act is located on the north wall over here in the legislative chambers. And there is also an automatic defibrillator that is in the back on the wall in the chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, could we get a roll call for the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization, please?
Commissioner Marine Boyle, Commissioner Mike Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan.
Present.
Commissioner Rogers is here, but just away temporarily. And Madam Chair.
Here, thank you. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, March 30th, 2021. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, April 20th, 2021, as a date for hearing certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls and increased value on properties. There are motion to approve A and B. Motion by Commissioner Mike Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Marine Boyle. Questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioner Morgan.
Voting yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Morgan voting virtually. Commissioner Rogers is absent for the moment. All the commissioners voting in person.
Thank you. Citizen comments? Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to resolutions. There are resolutions D through G. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Does that include adjournment? Any questions or comments? There's a motion by Commissioner Mike Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Marine Boyle. Please vote.
Voting yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Rogers is absent. Commissioner Morgan's voting virtually. All the commissioners voting in person.
With that, before we go on to the Board of Corrections, I am going to ask that we go into the Board of Commissioners to do two things. One, we'll do the recognition and proclamations, and then we'll do presentations, and then we'll go back to our regular agenda. So with that, is, could we get a roll call for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners?
Commissioner Marine Boyle, Commissioner Mike Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers is here, but still away. And Madam Chair.
Present, thank you. So we'll begin with the recognition and proclamations. And the first one is a resolution recognizing April 11th through the 17th, 2021, as Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week. And with us today, we have actually a former, let's see, Captain Steve Glant. And do you want to come to the microphone and then bring whoever else you have with you to the microphone as well? I will read the resolution, and then we'll have you guys speak.
Okay.
Whereas April 11th through the 17th, 2021, is Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week. And whereas the Nebraska Humane Society has a dedicated staff of animal control officers, communication specialists, and shelter staff that are dedicated to the care and safety of animals and public safety in our community. And whereas the Douglas County Board of Commissioner recognizes and appreciates the hard work by the Nebraska Humane Society and its staff, often under very difficult circumstances. And now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board recognizes April 11th through the 17th as Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week dated this 13th day of April, 2021. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Marine Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Mike Boyle. And Steve, do you want to go ahead and start?
Sure. I'd like to thank the county board for this resolution and for having us here. With me is Nancy Hints. She is our CEO of the Nebraska Humane Society. Kelly Brown, who is Field Director for the Humane Society, representing our communications department, is Julie Bernowski behind me. And then two of our most tenured animal control officers, Greg Williams and Ernie Starier, are here. So again, I thank, thank the board for this resolution. Just briefly, every year, our communications specialists answer a little over 100,000 calls every year. And of those 100,000 calls, 34,000 are dispatched to our animal control officers. So they stay quite busy, especially from now through, through the early fall months is our busy time. And they, they run constantly and just do fabulous work, like, like the resolution says that often it's under extreme conditions, and they, they just provide a very valuable service for the community. So again, thank you.
We appreciate that. Is there anyone who'd like to make any comments? Commissioner Mike Boyle?
I would. I am a frustrated dog owner because I don't have a dog right now. And haven't had one for a long time. I've got a bum leg, so I can't do a very good job of chasing them, that's for sure. I just want to tell you what, what I think about what you do. For many years, you know, we had, we lived at 45th and Hamilton. And when I went to St. Cecilia, we used to walk up to their school. And I'll confess now, I don't know if it was the law, but we had three dogs. And I think you have to have a kennel license, which of course, we didn't. And there was a dog that we had, a wonderful dog, Duffy, that was ill. And we just couldn't stand, you know, we were very worried about it and everything else. So my dad called the Humane Society and said, please, you gotta come get the dog, and don't do it after 3 o'clock because the kids are out of school, you know? And so twice, you fellows got held up, not you two particularly, but maybe, I don't know. This is 1953, I think. But anyway, my dad went out on the curb and saw the Humane Society truck coming, and then we were home playing, and he's out on the curb going, go on, go on. So he sent you off, and you came back. But finally, you got the poor dog taken care of. But I have so much respect for what you do and the important work that you do. And when I came by today, I saw the trucks out front, and I knew that was on the agenda. So I'm so glad you're here. And maybe the communications person would like to make a little pitch. If the licenses are still due, I know that we all get one, which is a good way to notify everybody. It's a good practical way to do it. But if you can, haven't gotten your license yet, you have, it's gone, March 15th or something, isn't it?
Correct.
So why do I remember that? But anyway, anyhow, you can still get a license even if you're in arrears. So it's really important to license your dog and to keep track of it, or your cats, or whatever the law is. So anyway, keep up the good work. And, you know, I, I just, I personally appreciate what you do for God's animals. It's great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Anyone else? Well, with that, again, we thank you for being here. Thank you for the work you do for Douglas County and, and very much appreciate all the work that you and your staff do. So thank you for being here. And we do have a resolution for you all. I'll have Commissioner Marine Boyle hand it to you. So thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Roll call, or please vote.
Commissioner Morgan?
Voting yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner Morgan voting virtually. Commissioner Rogers rejoined us. Everyone else voting in person.
Thank you. Next is a resolution recognizing April as the Second Chance Month, in effort to focus on prevention, reentry, and social support rather than incarceration. And with us today, well, I'll read the resolution first and then introduce someone on Zoom that's going to introduce a couple of people to talk to us. So whereas Second Chance Month is a nationwide campaign to unlock opportunities for the tens of millions of Americans with a criminal record who have paid their debt to society. And whereas launching the first Second Chance Month in 2017, Prison Fellowship, the nation's largest Christian nonprofit serving prisoners, former prisoners and their families, has spearheaded the nationwide effort to raise awareness about these barriers and unlock brighter futures for people with a criminal record. And whereas on March 31st, 2021, President Joe Biden declared April as Second Chance Month, affirming the administration's support for removing the unnecessary barriers that prevent those with a criminal record from becoming productive members of society. And whereas approximately one in three American adults has a criminal record, which limits their access to education, jobs, housing, and other things that need to, that they need to reach their potential. And whereas after incarcerated individuals serve their time, they should have the opportunity to fully reintegrate into society. It benefits not just the individuals, but all of society. And it is the best strategy to reduce recidivism. And whereas during Second Chance Month, we lift up all of those who have made mistakes, are committed to rejoining society, and are going to be making a meaningful contribution. And whereas by focusing on prevention, reentry, and social support rather than incarceration, we can ensure that America is a land of second chances and opportunity for all people. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby recognizes April, 2021, as Second Chance Month in Douglas County dated this 13th day of April, 2021. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Marine Boyle. And with us today, we have Mrs. Levon Stennis, and she's going to say a few words and then introduce a couple of guests that we have on Zoom with us. So Levon, the floor is yours. I think you might be muted.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the commissioners for recognizing April as Second Chance Awareness Month, on behalf of myself and thousands of other people who are starting over after making a poor choice or mistake. I want to particularly personally thank the commissioners for giving me my second chance. When I came back home, it was the Douglas County Board of Commissioners who allowed me to begin work with the Douglas County Corrections that spearheaded the program that now I teach in every single Nebraska prison and across the country. So personally, your commitment to second chances has allowed me to be able to start over again and not only benefit myself and my family, but I now hire five full-time individuals. And with me today is a member of one of my, one member of my staff, along with members of RISE, which is another reentry program. But I can't stress enough my appreciation to Douglas County because you haven't just done things symbolically, you have done things from a standpoint of putting symbol, not allowing yourself to put symbol over substance. You have substantively supported people like myself and others. And so I would be remiss if I personally did not acknowledge the impact that your efforts have had on my life personally. When I came back to Omaha, I did not know where to start. And I remember calling up Commissioner Borgeson and asking her, do you remember me? And she said, of course I do. And I said, well, will you take a phone call for me? And she says, you betcha. Well, she reached out and called me. And I told her about my coming back to Omaha, I was ready to start over. And she began to put things in place to allow me to get contracts and get exposure. Followed by that was Commissioner Chris Rogers, who also was instrumental in helping get me on different boards and supporting my efforts of reentry. And then Commissioner Borgeson, along with Commissioner Rogers, and then Commissioner Boyle, they all just embraced me. And then you all, as a Board of Commissioners, embraced my effort. And so I want to sincerely say thank you for what you've done in terms of helping me to get my second start. I don't want to just take up all the, the time today. I want to now introduce Lakeisha Taylor, who works for me. And she's appearing today to speak about what second chance. And followed by that will be members from the RISE team who are here also to speak. But again, thank you very much for recognizing April Second Chance Awareness Month and doing some more than just symbolically, but also the efforts that you put to help people like myself have true second chance opportunities. Thank you. Lakeisha?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lakeisha Taylor, and I work, just a second, I hear the echo. And so I, I've been working with Reconnect for the last three years. Ms. Levon Stennis William gave me my second chance. I was a hot mess when I came into, as a participant of the workshop. I was convicted, and I just didn't know what to do because the day after my sentencing, I lost my job. I'm a single mother, children, just a mess, just like I'm tearing up now. She told me, she told me to make my mess my message. And from that day forward, you know, I pushed through a lot. Like I said, she gave me my second chance. She took, she asked me for my resume. I had a, I have a degree in finances, and I've worked with kids for the last 11 years. But I just didn't know what to do, which way I was going anymore. So she said, she said, I'm gonna interview you. And that following week, she interviewed me, and she was like, well, what do you think about coming on board? You know, I would like you to work in my program as someone that can be an influencer to others that, you know, is out here being convicted, you know, or becoming a felon and have no hopes or, you know, feeling worthless. So the last three years, what I've done is basically redefine who I am. I restructured my life. I have two children. I have a college child, she's on her way to nursing school. My youngest daughter actually graduated, well, she graduated a semester early in December. She walks next month. She's planning on also become, going into law enforcement, the law enforcement field as some type of probation officer. She's not sure what she wants to do, but she wants seeing her mother and going through the things that I went through and just being, you know, she said I inspired her to want to work, to give, you know, give the opportunity to give someone else a second chance and understand because she has it firsthand. I'm in the process of buying my own home. Also, I'm in the process of building my business plan to also move forward with working with kids and kids in care, providing like a stable restructure home, trying to shed light on, giving them hope and seeing things a different way. So I've been working on that. Ms. Levon, she has been my silent mentor. You know, she's been that extra support that I needed from the day I walked into her program.
Thank you. And are there folks from?
Do you want to speak?
Are there folks from RISE here?
I guess not.
Okay. All right. Well, I can't thank you enough for coming forward today as we recognize Second Chance Month and putting faces to what we're actually doing, making a difference in your lives, is what I think one of our main goals should be as policymakers. And being able to come forward, step forth with the courage that you have, and talk about your successes also gives hope for others. And I think we need so, so much more of that. So I appreciate you coming forward. Commissioner Mike Boyle?
I'm so impressed with what you've done, Levon and Lakeisha. I think that's really remarkable. And I, I have to tell you something that, it's pretty incriminating, but I'm gonna say it anyway. When I would represent, I was representing a woman one time who was picked up for drunk driving. And she was taken to the police station at 3 o'clock in the morning and, you know, booked and let out on the street, and she was just devastated. She and another woman had suffered a death in the family, and they just got a little bit out of hand. And anyway, that's what they did. So you know what I used to tell those people that I represent a lot of people who were drunk drivers? But the ones that I did, I said, you know, the difference between you and me, the difference between you and me is that you got caught. And I stopped drinking because I got home one time and didn't realize how I got there. And that was the end of it for me. And surprised Anne when I wasn't drinking anymore, and I still don't. Those, those conversions that occur, you know, and sometimes they're, you're helped along, which I was, and got a second chance and never caused any damage or hurt anybody, which I was so, so lucky and happy that I didn't. But it's just like you, Levon. I mean, you, you came home and made up your mind that you were gonna be different. You needed a second chance, and boy, did you go to the right person. Mary Ann is just a standout. She has, really represents the best of this county board. She has a big heart, and she, she knows how to make things happen. She is, I always consider her the unofficial chair of this board, even when she is the chair. She's the unofficial chair. She's the one, she's the go-to person. She really is. And so I really am really happy to congratulate you. Second chances are what it's all about. You know, we have so many people who are in poverty. They need to get out of poverty. We need to help them. That's what the county board is here to do. That's our job. We understand that people are first, and you're helping us deliver that message in a real important way. And Commissioner Rogers as well, so many of the commissioners here, we're all dedicated to the principles that you, you live. So thanks a lot for all you're doing, and keep it up, and we're with you. Thank you for what you do. It's, it's God's work. It's great work. Thank you.
Commissioner Marine Boyle?
Hello. How are you doing? I just want to say again that, reiterate exactly what my father said, and especially about Chair Borgeson. But bottom line is, what you've done is an amazing thing individually, but I think the, the main point I want to bring home is the inspiration personally that you've, you've put forth for others. And then what you've done, you've put together this program to really send this message elsewhere. I think you are exactly what this community, what this world needs right now when we're, we see, we're trying to figure out how to solve problems. You've lived it, so you really know how to solve them. And I'm just incredibly impressed. I love what you do. I'm 100% behind you. And the inspirational story of Lakeisha, I just love that. So, so you gotta keep holding the banner for, for folks like you and what you're doing. So I appreciate everything that you're doing. Thanks.
Okay, no other lights on. Again, thank you for being with us. Keep up the good work. Keep spreading the hope for others that are in the same situation as you are, and we'll keep trying our hardest to help you all along the way. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please vote.
Voting yes. TJ?
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner Morgan voting virtually. All the commissioners in person.
Next is a resolution recognizing April 19th through the 24th as Do Good Week, an opportunity for all to show generosity. Whereas Do Good Week is the Omaha Metro's first ever event to do good in many ways every day for a week. And whereas Do Good Week powered by Share Omaha is an opportunity for all to show their generosity by giving and doing what we can for each other and hundreds of local causes. And whereas Do Good Week by Share Omaha has transitioned from Omaha Gives, which ended in 2020, to a series of themed days of doing good. And whereas it is exciting that every day for five days, the community can recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the Omaha Metro area. And whereas April 19th is Mission Monday, for individuals and businesses to think about the big causes that matter to you and what can be done to further their cause. And whereas April 20th is New Donor Tuesday, an opportunity to find an organization you have never donated to and give them a first-time donation. And whereas April 21st is Wish List Wednesday, where organizations have provided Amazon list of supplies that need to carry out their mission. Choose something and make a wish come true. And whereas April 22nd is Volun Thursday, and you can volunteer in distance and virtual ways to make a difference. And whereas April 23rd is Fund It Friday, and you can replenish the cash that causes you care, for causes you care about. And whereas April 24th is Celebration Saturday, and a shout-out with virtual hugs and high-fives for all the good that happened during the Do Good Week. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby recognizes April 19th through April 24th, 2021, as Do Good Week in Douglas County, and encourages all citizens to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful, dated this 13th day of April, 2021. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Marine Boyle. And I think we have a couple of people from Share Omaha on the Zoom. If, one of you want to start?
Wonderful. Thank you, Commissioner Chair Borgeson, and thank you to the entire Douglas County Board of Commissioners. I'm Marjorie Moss. I'm the executive director of Share Omaha. And with me today, I have three team members who probably won't give remarks, but I wanted to recognize them all the same. Their hard work toward this effort is so appreciated. We have Mary Tallon, who's our Community Partnerships Manager. We have Haley Armstrong, who's our Do Good Week Specialist. And Katie Forney, who's our Marketing and Communications Manager. We're so grateful, all four of us are so grateful for the recognition that's come from this county board. And specifically to Commissioner Chair Borgeson. that's come from this county board and specifically to Commissioner Chair Borgerson. And just knowing the nonprofit impact that each of you have had throughout the community means so much to us. And leaders like you are pivotal in striking public-private partnerships for so many of our nonprofits. So thank you for that. Share Omaha is a conduit between nonprofits who are doing good work and people in the community, do-gooders that want to impact that work. And we are grateful and honored to have that place in the community. And we believe that nonprofits are what dynamically hold together our community. We believe that especially in a year like 2020, that nonprofits rose to the occasion, that frontline workers were definitely found in niche organizations or those pillars that we always think about when it comes to nonprofits. But also, our community showed up, especially this commission for arts organizations, for museums, for organizations that were shuttered for a period of time. And we represent all of those nonprofits. And we are so excited for Do Good Week to be an opportunity for the public really to show up in the ways that matter to them, to impact these causes that are that are scratching the itch in their in their hearts related to what they want to see as change in the community. And philanthropy is is the act of bettering the lives of somebody else and bettering a cause that exists outside yourself. And we are grateful to be stewards of that online and in practical ways throughout the community. So thank you and have a happy Do Good Week.
Thank you. Any comments? I'll just make one. And I hope that you're into, oh, Dan, did you want to say something?
I can wait till you're done, Commissioner Borgerson. I would like to say something.
Go ahead. I'll wait.
Well, I'm not speaking as a clerk, but as a member of the Douglas County Health Center Foundation, I just want to thank Mary Tallon. We had so several weeks ago, we actually weren't on Do Good Week. And we reached out to Share Omaha to see how we got the Health Center Foundation on there. And Mary was very helpful. So I just wanted to, since she's on the call, just wanted to thank her for everything she did for us.
Well, great.
You're very welcome. You're very welcome.
Well, thank you for being with us. And actually, what I was going to say is I hope that your Do Good Week turns into a good do good do year where we are able to do this year round. I love that we're highlighting certain days, doing certain things. And that's just clever. And I think it'll take off. I think it'll really take off with our community. But thank you for the work you do. Thank you for being with us and good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, vote please.
Voting yes. Virtually.
And we'll have Leah, I'll give the resolution to Leah to get to you guys, okay?
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner Morgan voting virtually. Other commissioners in person.
All right. With that, could I get a quick motion to approve items A and B minutes and claims? Motion by Commissioner Mike Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Voting yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner Morgan voting virtually. Other commissioners voting in person. And thank you, Chair Borgerson.
Yes, you bet. Next, we'll go to presentations. And we have the first one is our COVID-19 update and our COVID-19 vaccination plan update by Dr. Adi Pour. Good morning, doctor.
Good morning, commissioners, and good morning, people on Zoom. Glad to share with you some update today. Our seven day rolling average as of last night is 28 new cases per day, per 100,000. And we have tested up to now 59% of our community. And we have 68,739 cases as of today. What we have seen last week is we have seen 1,423 cases in Douglas County. That is an increase of 194 cases compared to the week before, or a 16% increase. And if you are like me, I like to look at the data and I like to see where are those increases occurring. And what we are seeing is that 54 of those 194 cases were increases in the 20 to 29 years old, and 41 cases 30 to 39, and 25 cases 40 to 49. So what that really means is that 58% of the increases that we saw last week were between 20 and 49 years of age, really that young adolescent. Also, our positivity rate, of course, has increased and it is now at 8.4%. Our hospitalization are probably one of the things that worry me the most this week because we have seen an increase day by day. And as of last night, we have 135 COVID patients in our Omaha area hospitals, 42 of them in our ICUs, and 16 of them on vents. And just for comparison, when I talked to you last time, two weeks ago, that was 70 people in the hospital compared to 135 now. So you can see we have an increase of 52% just from two weeks ago. Our death totals are still 685, and our actually case fatality rate is staying at 1%. It's going down even slightly. And I'm so glad to report that in April, we have not had one single death reported to the health department. However, you know, that can change because death certificates always are lagging behind. I just want to talk to you also quickly about variants because there is a lot of hypotheses out there that potentially we are seeing increases in cases because we see more variants. And we do. We do see the UK variant, probably the most pronounced in our community, with 127 cases. The California variant has 28 cases in Douglas County and 48 in Nebraska total. And then we have seen two of the variant, the Brazilian variant called P2. And as of yesterday, we are reporting the first in the state of the New York variant. That's, you know, we need to see what the patterns are of those variants. And I think Nebraska Public Health Lab is doing a good job in trying to look at look for those variants and do quite a lot of sequencing. They are actually at this time doing about 100 sequencing of tests in a week. But now let me move over to the vaccine data. And I think I want to start out with, I think, the best news that more than 200,000 vaccines have been administered in Douglas County. That is 47.6% of our individuals have received at least one dose, 47.6%, close to 50% of those who are eligible. And 29 or close to 30% of our community are fully vaccinated. That is 124,380 individual. Also, looking at this data a little bit more closely, I asked our staff to look at what are we seeing in those 65 years and older? You all know, those have been vaccinated has had the highest priority in the beginning. So they potentially had the eligibility the longest. And 90% of those 65 and above have at least received one dose. And 80% are fully vaccinated of those 65 years and above. So I think this community and the state has done a good job in really prioritizing those that are vulnerable and getting them vaccinated. And as you can imagine, as ages decrease, then we are also seeing the vaccination rates decreasing. When we look at those 55 to 64 years of age, 60% of those have received one dose. When we go further down, 45 to 54, 44% have received one dose. When we look at recent ethnicity, I want to share with you that 46% of the white population who is eligible for vaccine has received a vaccine. 40% of American Indians have received a vaccine, 37% of our Asian population, 32% of our Hispanics, and 28% of our African Americans. And so you are seeing the Caucasian population at 46% and African American at 28. That's kind of the range we are. And we are hoping that that gap is closing as we really move vaccine into our minority population. I think what may be interesting for some of you is that we now have a zip code map on our website that describes the percentages of vaccines that have been provided in the zip code areas. And we are seeing four of the lower zip codes are 68107, 68108, 68111, and 68110. And their vaccination rate is between 24 to 30% with one dose. The higher zip codes are in our western part, and there are two. They are the Bennington area, 68007, and the Elkhorn area, 68022. And in those two zip codes, we have between 61 to 75% of the population that is eligible has been at least receiving one dose of the vaccine. When we talk about vaccine allocation for this week, we are receiving 14,700 doses, 11,700 Viso, and 3,000 Moderna. Nobody received Johnson &amp; Johnson this week. However, as you have heard in the media, we had passed on Saturday and Sunday, and we had some extra doses that we were going to administer now this week. However, with the new development this morning, we are going to pass on that too. And I will talk about that a little bit later. We are starting to see some no-shows in our vaccine clinics. And so between 5 to 15%. And I would just encourage the public, I understand that people may have signed up on different sites, but it really is not fair to those who are not able to get an appointment if people are doing double appointments. At least they should call and they should cancel the appointment that they did on the Douglas County Health Department website. As you also know, everyone is eligible 16 years or above. That means the individual needs to have had their 16th birthday. And we also know that the consent form needs to be filled out and that this time a parent needs to come to the vaccination site. And the reason for that is that should there something happen, should there be an allergic reaction or something, you want the parent to be there, especially if the individual needed to be transported to a hospital. You also saw that on Friday, Viso put an EUA submission in potentially for vaccine to be approved from 12 to 15 years of age. And we could expect those reviews happening pretty quickly within two, two, three weeks, for example. But so now I want to go back to the significant event that we reported to the media in on Friday. And it had to do with a blood clot in an individual in their 40s. And as you have heard this morning now, these seem to be rare events, but still, we were on a call with CDC and FDA on Friday discussing this case. And it must have happened over the weekend that they are feeling now, it really requires an advisory committee to look at each of these cases. There are, there seem to be six cases nationwide now, all in females from the age of 18 to 48 years of age. And so this advisory committee that the CDC is putting together is looking at this all this data on Wednesday to potentially make some recommendation. I do think it is, it is a good news story because it tells us that everyone is really conscientious to look at adverse side effects, reporting them immediately. And if a case should happen, that the proper recommendations are being made. And this is specifically important too for the healthcare provider community so that they know what recommendations that they should make to their patients, but also what recommendations should be made in regards to potential exposure. So with these rare events, CDC this morning talked about four things that people who received the J&amp;J vaccine within the last two to three years should look out for. One of them is headache, one of them is severe abdominal pain, leg pain, or shortness of breath. And if those symptoms are occurring within three weeks and individuals have received a vaccine, they should contact their healthcare provider. These blood clots are a little bit unusual and they may need a different treatment than just a regular blood clot. So that is what is going on. A lot of vaccine clinics in our community, this has been a very intense weekend. We had on Friday, we had a clinic for 12 hours on our 35th and L Street location. And we had another clinic at North Omaha High School, again, 12 hours on Sunday with Viso and Moderna. We also have two, two girls in clinic, one on Saturday and one on Sunday, that really tried to draw in people from that neighborhood. And so a lot of, lot of efforts going on with our healthcare provider, too, with our healthcare systems, who are having their own clinic staff. And so we are moving forward because the most important thing at this time is to do everything safe and make sure that individuals are being vaccinated. Vaccine is still our best option to get out of this pandemic. So any questions you may have?
Any questions for Dr. Pour? Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
Hi. Once again, thank you for the great overview. Just a couple of questions. One was, you mentioned that the number of cases are occurring mostly in the younger group. Can you tell me how the hospitalizations, are they also the younger folks? Oops, I think you're on mute.
Dr. Boyle, that is a conversation we were going to get this morning, but because of this J&amp;J incident, the state epidemiologist couldn't share this with us. So we are looking into this. I'm very interested. What I heard this morning also from Dr. Simons and Dr. Kari Simons, and who is a pediatrician, that she's saying they are seeing more adolescents in their hospitals.
Okay. Yep. I was just wondering, because as you know, it seems like it's more deadly in folks that are older. And but at the same time, the toll on the healthcare system is the thing that as that I see more admissions in my hospital, too, as a result. So I was just curious what we were seeing across the community. The second question I have is, you mentioned that about 30% of the community is vaccinated. If herd immunity is somewhere maybe around 65%, do you have, can you make any wild predictions as to when we possibly may reach that?
You know, I would like to make them, but I think when we, if we move forward at the same pace as we are moving forward now, I would expect that potentially by the end of summer, we could see some herd immunity. But I really need to, people want to step up and be vaccinated. Only then can we reach herd immunity. And like I say, I'm starting to see some hesitancy arise.
Good. And then the last thing is just, I'm assuming that you think we need to double down on our efforts to continue with social distancing, wearing masks and all that.
At this time, yes, that would be my recommendation, especially with the variants coming into our community. I would like to make sure that everybody really still wears mask when they are inside, not so much when they are outside, not so much inside when they are around the table, conference table with five people, all of them have been vaccinated. I would say in those circumstances, you could be without mask. But if you are in public where you don't know who has been vaccinated or not, my recommendation still is to wear masks and do social distancing.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Mike Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Pour, thanks for the report.
Dr. Poor, thanks for the report of, of very good, very good information. That, so Johnson &amp; Johnson, the shots are being, the narrative that I've heard or the information I've heard, it's gone. We can't get it right now. They put a moratorium on it, correct? The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccination?
What they did, Commissioner Friend, is they put a pause on it, and this was CDC and FDA recommending the pause for their federal sites. And they are urging, they were urging and recommending to the state to have the same, to do the same. And our state just has come out with a news release about five minutes ago that they would recommend everybody's doing the same thing in Douglas, in, in Nebraska.
Okay, oh, good. Oddly enough, after the news broke this morning, I got a call on the way in, somebody, of course, who had a J&amp;J vaccination. Are there, other, other than the fact that there was the seven of those people that were diagnosed with blood clots, other than the fact that they were female, are there, are you seeing other comorbidities or other consistencies in those cases that would indicate, hey, somebody needs to watch out for that? So, and maybe somebody a little overweight or, or a high blood pressure? Are there, did they identify that yet? I don't want to wait for the media to give us some weird narrative because I don't know what to believe anymore. So I guess that was my question. Are there consistencies other than the fact that they were female?
You know, that would be the question that I would have too, and I have not seen an answer yet, and that is, I think, what this advisory board from CDC will be doing. They will look at what are some of the potential pre-exposing, exposing factors, and is there any commonality between those six? At this time, the commonality is that they are females.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Doctor, for this report. With the eligibility going to sixteen and older, and we have a month or so left on the school year, are there any plans to go into the schools to administer vaccines to school-aged eligible children?
Good question, Commissioner. So we talked to the superintendents last week. There is some interest there, but they also are saying, you know, their, their families with their students could, could go to the community sites. So we have a site in Millard, which is really convenient for individuals, families that go to the Millard School District or any, any Western School District. And they have Viso vaccine because it's only Viso that can be used in those sixteen and above. And at North High, last Sunday, we also had Viso there, and we saw quite a few parents who came with their students. So I think in, on our thirty-fifth and L Street, we also have Viso. So we try to put out that information. We are talking about having some vaccination sites at the schools. Time is running out pretty quickly because the Viso, you need to have three weeks in between, two weeks in between. And so I would, I would say, I would encourage parents and their students to go to the community sites that already are, because we do not have enough Visos just to go to the schools at this time.
I noticed that our three biggest public schools, South, Central, and North, are in these ZIP codes that show low percentages of vaccinations. Would it be possible maybe to target those as, as sites for, for vaccinations?
Well, and you know, the, the two ZIP codes down South is where we have the thirty-fifth and L Street site, which is a consistent site, and we have One World, who has a pretty good site, and we also ask the Nebraska HHS to do a drive-through site at Metro South, and we have a drive-through site at Metro North. Now, those were J&amp;Js, and I, I need to check with them today how they are going to try to change that. But yeah, that's, that's, that's always a potential.
Thank you.
Okay, no other, Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
I'm sorry, just have one more quick question, Dr. Poor. For those folks who did receive the J&amp;J vaccine, there's probably a concern, of course, that they may develop clots too. Do you know if there are any suggestions for prophylaxis, like taking aspirin, or is there any recommendation that we can make before the FDA advisory panel comes through?
No recommendation yet, Dr. Boyle, that I have seen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, no other questions or comments? Karen?
On the chat from Kinesia Fraser at KETV, Dr. Poor, do you know if those increased COVID diagnoses in adolescents are connected to the new variants?
I, I cannot speak specifically. I don't, I do not know. I cannot make a statement on that.
Okay. All right. No other questions or comments? Again, thank you for being with us, Dr. Poor. We appreciate it. Keep up the good work. All right. With that, we have one other presentation, the annual State of Tourism presentation. Ms. Deborah Ward is here from the Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau, and this is sponsored by Commissioner Maureen Boyle, and I'll turn it over to you.
All right, as everybody knows, we've been in a pandemic for the past year, and our, our tourism dollars have gone down dramatically, so I thought I would have Deb Ward and her crew come and speak to us about what they've done to try to maintain that. I think there have been some huge accomplishments, considering that we have the, the NCAA Women's Basketball, or Volleyball Tournament in town, starting the, starting tomorrow to the 24th. That's a huge coup, so despite all of the, the drama surrounding COVID, I mean, that, that's a, a big, huge, positive thing that has happened. So, so, and yay Nebraska, yay Creighton, both, both teams are in the tournament. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Deb Ward to kind of give us an update on what's going on with the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. And you guys, good morning, Commissioners. You guys have spent the morning giving atta-boys to a lot of organizations. It's our turn. So happy National County Government Month to all of you. In celebration, we brought you a little gift, a Visit Omaha thermos, to fill with your preferred beverage. We know you work a lot of long, many times thankless hours in an effort to make sure our community is safe, healthy, and secure, and this is our small way of saying thank you. So thank you. Twenty twenty, well, it was set up to be a banner year for tourism in Omaha. It was not. One of the many things to come out of the pandemic, however, is that everyone now has a very clear understanding of what happens in our city when tourism disappears, and how many of our friends, family, and neighbors who depend on tourism lost their livelihoods. A couple of months into the pandemic, when the devastating impact on local tourism industry became clear, we developed a message of hope for the more than eighteen thousand local residents who work in the tourism industry. The Omaha Intermission video was created to inspire the community to remain strong and supportive. So here is that video. Whoops. No audio? Hold on. We had it. Ready to try again?
[music] Each morning, in the heart of a hearty Midwest, the sun rises over a city where the harshest winters bring out the warmest smiles, where storm chasing is a family pastime, where music makes waves coast to coast, where everything inside draws our community out, where people share resilience, the men, the women, the families whose lives have been put on pause. Let's remind them that this is just the intermission, and the show will go on.
And the tourism community did remain strong, although battered. We are starting to see things get a little bit better. As the Commissioner mentioned, the NCAA Volleyball Tournament is in the city this week. This is a great example of that, but it will take time to fully recover. The Visit Omaha team has been working to recoup more than fifty-six million dollars in meeting and event business lost due to, due to the pandemic. We are slowly but surely making progress. We did not have to lay off or furlough anyone on our team, which allowed us to maintain a full staff approach to mitigating the impact of these COVID cancellations, which was a good thing. That was not the case at the majority of CVBs across the country. They were all very short-staffed, had to lay off everybody. We had that, that wonderful opportunity to stay fully focused. Last year, the sales team successfully rebooked twenty-four of those meetings and events, securing ninety-six million dollars worth of business for our community. In addition, as of March of this year, the team has secured another forty-one events worth more than fifty-five million dollars. This would not have happened without the dedicated staff. We are very proud of our sales team, led by Kathy Keller. Raise your hand. We could not have been able to, without, without Kathy, without great partnerships with the Convention Center, with the hotels, with the Omaha Sports Commission in particular, we would not have been able to rebook all of the hotel rooms needed for the U.S. Olympic Swim Trials in June. We just would not have. So they deserve a huge, a huge atta-boy. As we look ahead to 2021, we are cautiously optimistic. As you know, the majority of our budget comes from hotel tax revenue paid by visitors. In 2020, Visit Omaha received a little over twenty, two-point-six million dollars in hotel tax. That's a forty-five percent decrease over the year prior. The city's general fund contribution does increase this year to one-point-eight million dollars, and the mayor has, as she announced, has allocated an additional three million dollars to offset the losses and help with recovery efforts. Based on research and projections, we expect lodging tax to come in higher in 2021 than 2020. I think we all could have made that projection, right? But we are still anticipating at least a twenty to thirty percent reduction over 2019 due to the unknown impact COVID continues to have on business meeting and leisure travel in 2021. As for convention groups and events, we do, while we do know how many meetings and events we have secured in the city in 2021, about fifty-four groups worth one-hundred-and-sixty-one million dollars, what we don't know is how attendance at those meetings and events will still be impacted by COVID, or if there will be even more cancellations. For instance, the NCAA Volleyball Tournament in the city right now has, is at twenty-five percent capacity, and we recently had several convention groups cancel, and their meetings weren't even scheduled until September of this year. So the comfort level among meeting and event planners still is not at a hundred percent right now. We utilize something called STAR. It's an independent hotel data and benchmarking service that provides us with specific information on our local hotels. STAR projects that Douglas County hotel occupancy numbers will not be back to pre-pandemic levels until at least 2023. Some more dire projections indicate it will take till 2025. When our department is fully staffed, we have twenty-five happy employees, as you see here. Currently, we have eight open positions. We have budgeted for the full twenty-five in 2021, but at least four of those eight open positions will likely remain unfilled until we have a better handle on the revenue and, and expenses coming in. Dean Miller, there he is, he's our Vice President of Operations. He does a great job monitoring our revenue and expenses, and we go over these numbers monthly with our team so we can adjust as needed. Knowing that leisure travel will come back first, in fact, already started to come back in March, about sixty-two percent of our hotels in Douglas County were filled on the weekends, which is good news. Our marketing department, now led by Jasmine Goodwin, right there, has built a lot of flexibility into our 2021 advertising plans. Jasmine has been at the Bureau with me for fourteen years. She's always been my right hand. We're not missing a beat with her. Absolutely not. Our first priority is targeting those leisure travelers in regional drive markets. Research tells us that travelers are looking for less populated destinations that are close to home and offer a strong healthcare infrastructure. Our goal is to take advantage of pent-up demand. I know everybody here probably wants to travel as soon as it's safe, so does everybody else. But in these cities, in these cities that, with the security of vacationing in a familiar, comfortable city. Now, we began advertising in mid-March, targeting our traditional drive markets of Kansas City, Des Moines, Sioux Falls, and Minneapolis. New this year, we're also targeting Chicago, large population base, easy flight, easy drive. We're also utilizing a lot more digital, social media, and streaming television advertising, which is a lot more affordable, yet still effective. On the meeting convention sales side, the Visit Omaha sales team has created a recovery campaign that incentivizes third-party meeting planners to bring their convention business to Omaha in 2021. This in effect adds about twelve hundred sales members to our sales force. In addition, the team continues to focus on strategic partnerships with organizations that will increase our areas' influence with and access to more than twenty-six thousand meeting planners and decision-makers. From a staff perspective, we are focusing on the future. We are building programs to create more bench strength throughout our department, and we're focusing on how our department can become more diverse and inclusive. In fact, we are collaborating with the City of Omaha's Deputy Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion to develop staff awareness programming and to create new strategies for employee recruitment and vendor selection. In addition, I serve on the Board of the University of Nebraska's Hospitality Program with the goal of making tourism, the tourism industry more appealing to a diverse group of students. In conclusion, I want to assure you that we diligently monitor our revenues monthly as they come in and make adjustments in programming when necessary. We're very adept at being flexible and creative, and 2020 has taught us even more so how to do that. Thank you for taking the time to really understand what we do and how tourism impacts our local economy, provides jobs for eighteen thousand of our friends, family, and neighbors, and enhances the quality of life for all of us. Your unwavering support is noted and absolutely appreciated. We've left behind printed copies of our 2021 Business Plan and our 2020 Annual Report, and as you'll read, despite COVID and despite all of the challenges, we did accomplish a lot last year. So thank you again.
Thank you. Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
Yeah, just again, thank you, thank you for that detailed presentation. I think it's, it makes us all feel better about where the future's going. And just a quick question, you, as far as those folks that have booked with us for the next year, just give an idea about kind of who they are, what they represent?
We have, well, we have a lot of youth sporting events. NCAA volleyball is in the, in the city right now, but what you may not know is we've had five large youth volleyball tournaments in January, February, and March. We have another three large youth volleyball tournaments coming up in May, in May, and that's fifty million dollars just in volleyball tournaments. Also in the city this week is a USA High School Hockey Tournament, which is bringing in thirty-two men's teams and eight women's teams. So the, the city should be pretty full this week, but it's a variety of different things. We have meetings, but we have a lot of youth sporting events that we've, we've booked in the short term to fill in those, those COVID cancellation gaps.
As far as, like, getting tickets to events like that, for example, is there something on the website that you have in Visit Omaha, or is it?
Tickets?
I'm just thinking, like, for people who want to go to those tournaments or go to the USA Hockey, are there ways for folks to find out about those things so that they have, they can try to attend them?
Thanks for the plug, but yes, visitomaha.com will, will give you all the information that you need.
Good deal, thanks.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Maureen.
Oh, just a minute, PJ. Commissioner Kavanaugh, and then Commissioner Friend, and then Commissioner Morgan.
Thanks for this, Deb. You've done a great job under really tough, tough circumstances, so kudos to you and your staff for bringing the Omaha message to people all over.
Thank you.
I, I understand that in addition to the volleyball tournament, that the Olympic Swim Trials are scheduled to come here as well. What can you tell us about that?
The Olympic Swim Trials, which were originally scheduled for last year, were postponed. They, they are now in the city in June. Instead of over one week, we have Wave One and Wave Two, so it's here over two weeks. We expect about five, and Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, five to six hundred athletes in the city the first week. Two of those athletes in each category, thank you, move on to the second week, and we expect about six to seven hundred athletes to come in for the second wave. Again, that, that unknown is that fan base. Right now, it looks like they're going to allow fans up to fifty percent capacity, so we should have some fans in the stands as well.
So fifty percent capacity at the CHI?
Mm-hmm, as of right now, right.
Okay. Are those tickets on sale now, or how does that work?
I think it's coming, right? I think the announcement was last week, and the tickets are coming. We get a lot of those questions. Yeah.
Okay. Can people contact you for more information on this?
They can go to visitomaha.com, and I think we even have a special website, visitomaha.com/swim. Pretty easy.
That's simple, omaha.com/swim.
Visitomaha.com. Omaha.com will go get you somewhere else.
Right.
[laughing] I think it's coming, right? I think the announcement was last week, and the tickets are coming. We get a lot of those questions.
Okay. Can people contact you for more information on this?
They can go to visitomaha.com, and I think we even have a special website, visitomaha.com/swim. Pretty easy.
That's simple, omaha.com/swim.
Visitomaha.com. Omaha.com will go get you somewhere else.
Right. We've also heard that College World Series is scheduled to come back, and the big baseball tournament, what can you tell us about that?
I know they're still working through the ticket process, but we should have our eight teams playing here in June, and it actually overlaps the second wave of the USA Swim Trials.
And do we know, maybe you mentioned this and I didn't hear it, but the seating arrangement for that would be?
They have not announced the capacity yet at all, and I think the NCAA is really looking at how these other tournaments go, and it, you know, basketball, then volleyball, those were indoor, so I think that'll give them some experience to determine an outdoor event.
For the CWS?
Yes.
Yes. Right. So the Big Ten Baseball Tournament, I think, was on and off, and?
I think that's been canceled. That has been canceled.
Is it back on?
No. They're figuring out a different way to get those teams qualified for the College World Series.
So is that like a to-be-announced, whether or not that's going to go forward?
It's been announced that it will not be.
It's not?
No.
That's final?
Right.
Nothing we can do about that?
Not that I know of, no.
Okay. Well, kudos for all you do. Thanks for getting the message out, and I agree with you. I think '21, certainly '22 will be better years for us.
Right. I was joking with somebody that if you just invite your whole family to come to the city, we'd probably be better than last year.
Thanks a lot.
Commissioner Mike Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Deb, thanks for the information. Really appreciate it. I think you probably know about this, and I've actually talked to Madam Chair about this as well. The Elkhorn Athletic Association is actually working to a 47-acre plot out at 262nd and Ida, 20 ball fields, an indoor fieldhouse. They've got $2.5 million of private investment already, and I think they're about to close on a note for another 20-some million. The exciting part about this, and I'd love to talk to you about it going forward, I wanted to put it in a public forum because I don't know if a lot of people know what Bruce O'Neill and his team is actually doing. That is, to me, that's kind of an exciting thing. They're talking about the potential of maybe 100,000 families in a summer cycling through those drive-time items that you threw up there, South Dakota, Minnesota, Kansas, Missouri, stuff like that. So I'd be happy to talk to you and your team about that, and if you haven't already hooked up with, you know, Bruce, we could do that in the future.
We'd love to. As you can see, youth athletics is a huge business, and the more we can provide more fields and more venues to do that, we absolutely, we'd love to talk to you. We've got a director of sales who focuses on sports. We'd love to do that.
And again, we could have done this offline, but I wanted to use this forum to let people know that Douglas County, while it's growing, there's probably three counties in this state that are actually growing. Sarpy County is one of them, Douglas County is another, and maybe Lancaster County on occasion, right? Sarpy County has done all kinds of innovative things, Douglas County and Omaha. These are innovative things that the Elkhorn Athletic Association actually took the reins and ran with it. I just thought it was pretty cool. So?
It'd be good to learn more.
Yeah. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner PJ Morgan?
The question I was going to ask was already asked concerning the College World Series, that they have not yet announced how they'll handle the fans' participation, but also I wanted to just thank Deb Ward through a tough year and what her leadership has done and the great team that she has. Thank you for what you've been doing, and our community much appreciated.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Morgan, and just so you know, check with Dan. You've got a gift sitting here, too. So make sure he doesn't run off with it.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
I want to add my congratulations to you and your staff for really plunging ahead with all of this. This is, it shows really good leadership and good cooperation and a great attitude about when things get tough, you know, you're stuck in there and really got some things going, and I really think that's great. And I'm glad you were able to keep the staff. It's really important to have everybody on the ground and ready to roll. My question deals with maybe a little more of a controversy, but are you doing anything to help the racetrack with the casino? Do you see that in your future with advertising?
You know what? We have, I have met with them to try to figure out what it is that they're building. They're not going to have a hotel affiliated with it, but that will certainly be an attraction once it's built and up and running that we will utilize, sure. There's a lot of groups, Kathy will tell you, that love the fact that the casinos are right across the river. Now the casinos are right here.
Well, you know, Grand Island's building, up there, they're building a $200 million operation, which is great, and Lincoln's doing some things, and big things, and I'd like to see us, you know, involved in that as well. I don't gamble except on the Powerball, and I haven't won it yet, right? You know, you can tell I wouldn't be here necessarily, you know, but anyway, although I love the county board. But anyway.
You could just subsidize them then.
I'm not committing disdain if I win, okay? So anyway. Anyhow, I think, you know, I don't see gambling as a sin. I think it's something that, you know, I, when I was running for mayor, I had a big crowd of people, and some fellow stood up and he said, "What's your position on bingo?" And I didn't know what to say, and I said, "Well, you know, I'm Catholic. Bingo's a sacrament." So anyway, that was the end of the question about bingo. But anyway, I just really think that we ought to embrace that and do everything we can to make it work because it can produce revenue for our community and help reduce taxes at the same time. So I really wish you well. You're doing a great job. I'm really happy for you, and plus, that mask says it all. That says it all. So with all those sparkles, that's right. Okay, good luck. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Count on us. I think you know you have our support.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Okay, no other lights. I do want to thank you, Deb, and oh, 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 oh.
Luis is on the line, and he has a question.
Luis?
Thank you. Hello, Commissioner Borgeson, Madam Chair?
Hello.
I see that you're back.
I am.
Okay, I didn't make it in today, but I got on Zoom.
Yes, I see that. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, Commissioners. I want to ask about the lodging tax. I know that it gets a fair amount of revenue, and I don't know if it's all going to one place or if it's divvied up.
Do you want me to answer?
That's pretty much, yeah.
Sure. There's a 5% lodging tax on every hotel in Douglas County. 1% goes to the state for their promotional efforts to Nebraska tourism. 2% comes to the Douglas County Board for their 262, their Visitor Improvement Fund, and 2% comes to us for the promotion of the improvements that the county makes. Does that help? Yes?
Yes. It's, so the lodging tax is divided. I am a critic of tourism in, for Omaha. I'm not saying it's something that we shouldn't be focused on, but I don't know too many young people that want to stay in the service industry. And so I've been a critic in that if the government, local government, is concentrated on this effort, if it's benefiting, how is it benefiting the local community besides revenue for certain, for certain parts of the city, like the hotel rooms? As I recall, somebody said that, or I saw it somewhere, that Omaha has extra hotel rooms, like that they're built, when they build these structures, that it's kind of just going more than we need currently, but with the pandemic, it's, everybody's like scaled back immensely. And during this time, you're getting back to levels. I don't think that we should get back to those levels just to get back. Everyone needs to change, and I hope the tourism, the tourism industry can be more holistic with being in the community. It's, to me, it, we're just kind of operating on like a corporate level, like just money setups, and I've seen some unfortunate encounters because of this.
Maybe it would be helpful if I could tell you just a little bit about it. Tourism brings about $1.3 billion to our local economy, and that's because 13.1 million during a normal year, visitors come into their, into our city, and they're spending their money at lots of different places, at restaurants, at our small businesses, at our small retail shops, at our hotels, at our attractions, and that generates that $1.3 billion for our local economy. Actually, a lot of, I think it's like $84 million in tax revenue goes to Douglas County and the City of Omaha. That then, in the, you know, as you go down, saves taxpayers' money. So if we would have, if tourism would disappear, tax revenue goes down, as we've seen over last year.
One minute.
So there is a benefit to tourism that goes beyond just what you're seeing here.
Okay. Well, I don't want the tourism to disappear. It's, you know, it's kind of awkward place to be when you're criticizing something that, like you described, it helps Omaha, the City of Omaha, but I do it anyway because I know that like four years or five years ago, money went, lodging tax money went to a nonprofit. And so I think that if we can move money, particularly for like administrative purposes, that the county can find ways to support the county committees administratively. I know that this year?
Time, Luis. Thank you. That was your five minutes. Thank you, Luis.
Thanks.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
We'll talk about this sometime. I'll give you a call. But I can't tell you enough how much tourism and the department means to us, and quality of life and entertainment and the wonderful opportunities for us to get together with our families and enjoy these activities is just, that's just beyond a dollar amount, particularly after what we've been through. So I'm a huge supporter of what you're doing, what the folks are doing. I did have a question, and I asked our lobbyist, we'll probably talk about it a little bit later, but I was going through some legislative bills, and something kind of concerned me, and that was, it looked like the state was trying to get into the, where the tourism money would go to the state first and then come back to us as opposed to how it happens now. Do you have any knowledge of that, or?
Yeah, I think that was just a mistake.
Was that just a mistake?
Yeah, I think so. It was a bill that would have the state collect the lodging tax and keep 3%, which that already happens.
Okay.
So I think that they were talking about occupation taxes, and honestly, I think it was just a simple mistake, yeah.
Good. That's what I like to hear. That's fine. I don't want any more intervention in that. That works great. Okay, well, that was really what my question was. So just keep up the good work. I just, I'm knocked over by it. You're doing great.
Thank you.
And anything we can do to help, you let us know.
You got it.
Mary Ann will get you several million dollars more if you need it, so you just ask.
We do.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Again, thank you. Always good to see all of you, and keep up the good work. We appreciate it. Thank you. With that, could I get a motion to recess out of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and go to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections? Motion by Commissioner Mike Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Mike Friend. Please vote.
Voting yes.
Give us one moment, please.
Okay. And while we're waiting, I want to thank Commissioner Maureen Boyle for putting that on the agenda. I love when they come and give us their report, and again, you know, they've been through a tough time, but they're just doing a spectacular job. Thanks for putting that on. I haven't forgotten.
Sorry, being a little slow. We're almost there, but. Yeah. All right. Okay, thanks for waiting. Please vote. Commissioner Morgan, I'll mark you as yes. You voted earlier. And Commissioner?
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner Morgan voting virtually, all the Commissioners voting in person.
Thank you. We will go to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Maureen Boyle, Commissioner Mike Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Present. Item one, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, March 9, 2021. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Mike Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Voting yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner Morgan voting virtually, all the Commissioners voting in person.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom that would like to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none. That's, I think he wanted the Board of Commissioners, yeah. We'll move to the report for the Department of Corrections, Director of Corrections, Mr. Mike Myers. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Mike Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have my report for the month of March of 2021. Enclosure number one, Administrative Services. Following the ninth month of the fiscal year, our budget projection is $1,528,100 under budget. We will have some additional spending in the final quarter of the fiscal year. However, we do intend on finishing the current fiscal year under budget. $310,000, $310,373 were spent on overtime costs during March. This was a decrease of about $47,000 from the previous month and approximately $119,000 over the previous three months. This cost would be even lower if we were not filling additional posts, which are directly or indirectly related to the pandemic, and I'll elaborate a little bit more on that later in my report. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections. Due to the drastic impact of COVID-19 on Community Corrections activities, our data has been significantly different from the norm. Work release, the Reentry Assistance Program, and the Law Library were all suspended during the month. Individual requests for the Law Library materials are still being addressed. I am pleased to say that some modified operations for our therapeutic communities in the jail have been implemented, and we are preparing to fully reopen Community Corrections. There were 420 virtual court hearings facilitated with 67 and a half hours of virtual review of discovery materials that were also facilitated. And again, just a reminder, we created new positions called Virtual Court Facilitators to handle that function. Our reentry services staff, who stepped in and did that originally, have returned to their normal functions. Our 24/7 sobriety operations have changed drastically during the pandemic in order to become a largely remote-based program and to minimize face-to-face interactions. We have seen an increase with drug testing violations associated with the changes in this program that impact the immediacy of testing and consequences for drug use. However, now that all of the staff who work in the program have been vaccinated, we are beginning to make plans to safely transition that program. we are beginning to make plans to safely transition that program back to normal operations as well. 64 individuals were placed on the program. There were 2,415 breath tests that were completed using remote breath testing technology. 19 were positive for alcohol use and there were 20 no-shows. The overall compliance rate was 99.8%. 54 individuals were monitored for 1,374 days of SCRAM monitoring. We had zero violations of any type and so the SCRAM compliance rate was 100%. There were 365 saliva drug tests administered with 64 violations. 114 drug testing patches were submitted for testing with 37 violations. Our work release program was closed for the month. House arrest admitted 118 individuals, which is a dramatic increase, which I believe is associated with the reopening of the courts during the month of March. The reentry assistance program was closed for the month. Our therapeutic communities, again, our reentry services staff are providing programming directly. We heard from Levon Stennis earlier today, who has been a partner of ours in our therapeutic communities as well as our Community Corrections programs. And we are anxious to work towards integrating our community partners back in to our operations in the coming months as well. Two individuals earned a GED. And I want to take a moment to talk about and give some credit to Heather Robinson, who heads up our educational programs in the jail. She took the initiative despite the fact that we're not mixing people in housing units and congregating them in classrooms. She took the initiative to bring GED to the students where they're at in the housing units, in housing units, including maximum security housing units, where we had never allowed GED to, those individuals were not coming down and sitting in classrooms and participating in that way. And Heather took the initiative and she's got several more people on the cusp of graduating, including a few from our maximum security housing units. That is unprecedented for us. And she deserves a ton of credit for her dedication and creativity to making that happen. We've learned several lessons during the pandemic that I think are, challenged us to do things that we never thought of. And even at some point, when life returns back to to normal, there are some things that we need to continue doing. Even though, you know, we've left the pandemic behind us at some point. There are some, there are some practices we've learned that we need to continue to do. And this is, this is one of them. Moving on to pretrial services. We continue to provide daily information to the courts regarding candidates for bond reduction and early pleas in response to the pandemic. 22 individuals were referred for to, for priority prosecution, saving 177 bed days. 268 individuals were placed on pretrial release. Overall, during the month, 1,395 individuals were managed on pretrial release with an 85% compliance rate. And as I mentioned earlier, the law library was closed, but individual requests are still being addressed. We continue to participate in a year-long pilot project to implement the public safety assessment as part of our strategy to enhance our overall pretrial release supervision and supportive services. We're currently working with the courts to figure out a way to transfer, transfer the data regarding individuals' court dates to our new software system that we have in place or that's being put in place so that we can start sending out text message reminders to individuals, reminding them of their upcoming court dates. That's been shown in other jurisdictions to reduce failure to appears by 37%. It's not as easy of a process as one might think, but we're working through it with the courts and try and, and we will overcome and figure out the workarounds to make that happen. And as I alluded to, we do have a new pretrial case management system that we're implementing that will, the text message reminders will just be one of the functions that's handled with that. Enclosure number three, our compliance. We will participate in a virtual American Correctional Association accreditation hearing as a formal follow-up to our recently completed audit. That hearing was scheduled for March, but it's been rescheduled for next week on the 20th. Preparations for our NCCHC, which is the National Commission of Correctional Healthcare, audit are underway and it will be completed at a date to be determined this, later this year. The Congressional Office of Detention Oversight actually is now conducting a virtual audit of our facility as it pertains to ICE detainees. And that'll be going, started yesterday and it will continue for the duration of the week. Enclosure number four, personnel. One sergeant and four officers below the rank of sergeant left employment in March. A class of nine officers began our latest training academy on March 22 and will graduate on April 30. I wish to congratulate Jeremy Jackson on his promotion to sergeant. And I want to congratulate Sergeant John Gannett and Officer Vincent Sheridan on their well-deserved retirements from the Douglas County Department of Corrections. Their experience and loyalty to DCDC will be deeply missed. Enclosure number five, population. There are 1,435 admissions. That was an increase over the previous month. Thankfully, our releases were 1,436, so that was kept pace. Our high count was 1,200 and our low count was 1,174, or excuse me, 44. Our average daily population was 1,173, and that is a decrease of 27 from the previous month. So that is very good news considering the restrictions that we have, that we have a little bit of breathing room in our population right now. Custodial sanctioned bed days were 74. The US Marshal and ICE populations increased. However, we're still carefully regulating the amount of beds we allocate to them. So those increases are fairly nominal. The felony pretrial population decreased slightly. The misdemeanor pretrial population decreased. Probation violations remain stable. The female population decreased and we were able to continue to consolidate to three female housing units. Enclosure number six, medical. There were 904 intake screenings completed and there were 290 health and physical assessments. Inmates were sent out nine times for emergency medical care. During March, two of those were by 911. There were six hospital admissions, which resulted in a combined 36 days of hospitalization. Enclosure number seven, mental health. There were 173 initial psychiatric assessments, 112 initial mental health assessments, 69 mental health infirmary placements. There were five referrals to the Board of Mental Health and one transfer to a long-term psychiatric facility. And other noteworthy items, we continue to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. We are fortunate to report again that our number of positive COVID-19 cases among our staff and incarceration incarcerated population remained low in March, though we still are having cases, they have remained in the single digits, which is manageable for us. We have vaccinated approximately 325, roughly two-thirds of our staff. Dr. Anne O'Keefe of the Douglas County Health Department conducted a virtual town hall for our staff on March 12. This town hall was recorded and is currently playing on our programming television throughout the jail as a continued effort to educate both staff and the incarcerated population on the COVID-19 vaccines. We have conducted three mass vaccination clinics at the jail and have vaccinated approximately 550 inmates. We are now focusing on vaccinating newly admitted individuals as soon as possible after their arrival. And as, I'll depart from my report for just a second in terms of going to the next item. We are getting Johnson &amp; Johnson at the jail, so that is paused at the moment. The Health Department will make other, either the Moderna or Pfizer available to us. We'll need to look at that to see logistically whether that's feasible for us, only because we don't, we don't know how long people are going to be with us. And, you know, we'll need to consult with the Health Department on if we give people one dose and they're released, we, they don't have an appointment set up. We don't know that they're going to have, get an appointment on their own in the community. So we'll have to have some conversations with the Health Department while the Johnson &amp; Johnson issue is worked out as to whether we just pause vaccinations for the time being or whether we can work out a method to administer one of the other vaccines that's still ongoing, given the, that those are two doses and we won't know if they're, will still be in our custody by the time they're eligible for their second dose. We continue to follow the CDC and Douglas County Health Department guidance and advice during the pandemic regarding quarantine testing, PPE use and sanitation. And effective on March 1, we were able to reduce our staffing costs by utilizing a thermal camera purchased through the CARES Act that enables us to eliminate the need to have a staff person present at our COVID checkpoint 24 hours a day. We continue to work carefully with the courts and the Sheriff's Office to implement safe and practical protocols as the courts have now fully reopened. We have a vested interest in the courts operating successfully as we, as our supply of maximum security beds is short. Our population, our population of maximum security inmates, whose cases are unlikely to be, to be able to be resolved with virtual court, increased by 36% from March 31, 2020 to March 31 of 2021. And that's due to the courts being largely shut down during that year. We will, on other items, we will have selected a vendor for our body worn camera project by mid-May of 2021 with full implementation of the program shortly thereafter. We are currently conducting trials of the final two vendors' products. Testing of Wi-Fi access points for our inmate tablet project is being conducted in preparation for installation of the infrastructure later this year. Work also continues on placing the infrastructure for our new security system. And I, as I mentioned earlier, planning for, we are planning for full reopening of Community Corrections programs. As the number of staff and inmates who are vaccinated increases, the risk associated with the more open and interactive environment of Community Corrections decreases. We are hoping to reopen sometime between late May and mid-June to coincide with the need to close a 64-bed housing unit in the jail to renovate the shower facilities. An ATM machine has been installed in the admissions area of the jail to allow for those with the means to bond out to access their funds from inside of the jail. This greatly improves the efficiency of the process and will result and has already resulted in bed day savings. And this falls under the category of no brainers that I have no idea why it wasn't done many years ago. But somebody came, brought the idea forward and we've already had people be able to, where they may spend days in jail, they can go right over. And if they're on a low-level fence that has a scheduled bond, they're able to just withdraw the funds and leave the jail within a matter of a couple of hours instead of a few days. And I want to also say a thank you to all of our staff who always rally around their own. During the month of March, one of our staff members received a very serious medical diagnosis. And coworkers organized a fundraiser consisting of an online auction, lunch sales and raffle, which resulted in thousands of dollars being donated to support a DCDC staff member and their family in a time of extreme need. With that, I'll stand ready for your questions.
Thank you, Director Myers. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
And thanks for this report. That's great news on the ATM. Kudos to you. You're exactly right. It's kind of a head slapper that no one did that before, but great that you've done it. A couple of quick questions. You're probably used to me asking this every single time. But the racial breakdown that you have on page 36 shows that the minority population represents 63.74 of the overall population. And that doesn't seem to vary very much. I know that you've added this to the report and we appreciate that. It might at some time be good if we could see kind of historically going back. And maybe you could supply that to us in a memo form or something like that, just so we could see where this massive minority-majority in our corrections population is and has been. My suspicion is, having asked you this basic question since you came on the job, that it's always been in the 60s. And, you know, that's 46% African-American, 13% Hispanic, 2.3% Native American, 1.3% Asian, 0.65% others. And, you know, there's something seriously wrong, but it's, you take who comes to you. I would just ask to maybe give us a historical view of that. You mentioned when you do this average daily population, I think it's on page 39, that the vaccination might be affected by the time that people are going to be there because of the need, if you're not doing Johnson &amp; Johnson, of a second shot. We get this statistic from our youth center folks, average length of stay. And you probably can determine that.
I can tell you, we recently looked into that to see the changes that the, how that pandemic has increased or impacted our average length of stay. And the average length of stay prior to the pandemic was 24 days. The average length of stay post-pandemic is 28 days. And that, that is really significant when you consider that we booked in 16,000 people. You add, you know, which is a decrease. The pandemic did suppress the rate of admissions. But if you multiply four days times over 16,000 people, you end up with a lot more people in your jail than you normally would have expected for the number of bookings.
So did I hear you correctly? It's gone up from 24 days to 20?
To 28, to 28 days. It's gone up four days. And that, you know, our, the average length of stay question is always a little, you can answer it globally, but there's a lot of subsections in there because a good portion of our population gets out within, you know, 72 hours or less. Over 40%. So that average length of stay is really impacted by the people who are staying in jail or that don't, don't have the means to bond out, are staying in jail much longer because of the courts delaying to be able to pull that number up by four days.
Yeah. That's a systemic problem. I understand it's beyond your control largely. On the health front, we have sadly deaths at the correction center. I don't see the deaths statistic contained in here. Maybe I'm overlooking it.
I don't know that we have.
One minute.
That we have ever included that, but that is something that we can.
Okay.
Track and give you.
Just bringing it from another department, we do get that statistic from our health center on a regular basis and it might be something that we want to put in here. I mean, serious, serious health conditions include death. So that might be something to look at going forward. The COVID cases, you said, are in the single digits. Is there an actual number that you could give us in terms of population and staff testing positive?
I better, I better refrain from trying to recall it from my, from memory, but it is, it has been very sporadic. We've been maybe having one or two staff who are out at any given time right now, recently, on a positive COVID test. We have had housing units put on quarantine.
Mike, I'm going to interrupt you here and we'll come back around. Commissioner Mike Boyle.
Before I ask to make a comment, I guess, first of all about the GED. I know that some of the rules on that have been changed, so that's.
It's more difficult to give the GED test, what I understand, but I'd like to ask maybe Heather and some of her people she works with to make suggestions on how we can improve what's happening, because I think it's been kind of stepped on. It's too bad. It slowed it down quite a bit. Anyway, I just make that comment. I'm very interested in getting those GEDs back up where they used to be, and it's not your fault that it happened. I also wanted to ask the question, is virtual court going to go away after this is all over? I don't know whether that seems to be, it might have some value. I know the public defender is not a big fan of it, and I can understand that because some of the people that are, you know, the people who are accused of a crime need legal defense at their right side. So I understand that fully, but if it is going to stay, that'd be a good thing, I believe it is. Lastly, and not lastly, but I want to ask you about bail, to try to get that back up on radar again, too, because there's so many people that are in jail. That ATM is great. I talked to some of the people when I was your mediator, I guess, or whatever, some of the crew there, and they did suggest moving an ATM, but frankly, I forgot about bringing it up. So I'm guilty of that. Too bad. My fault. One of the things I want to ask you, I know you do a lot of looking at who's in the facility, and the question about race is a very valid one, and it's very concerning to me. And with events that happened in the last few days, and of course, that was last December, that that lieutenant in the Army was hassled the way that he was, a lot of problems with that, because, you know, I know that in my daughter, one of my daughters-in-law got stopped in Iowa because she was driving a car that had all tinted windows. It's illegal in Iowa. I don't think it is in Nebraska. But it probably ought to be, the driver ought to be viewed, you know, and that's kind of what the law is in some states. In any event, his car was totally blackened out with, and the transit sticker was behind the blackened glass, which you can't see in so many cases. Marcos and I are working on a couple of things to try to change that in Nebraska. We'll see if we can get it done. But I did want to ask, one of the questions I'm concerned about is, do we, I believe that the cost of, and the reason why we have so many black people in jail, black men and women for that matter, is because of the poverty that really they find themselves in. And if you look back to after World War II, and the Korean War for that matter, when people came back from those wars, they were given benefits, like low-down payments and so forth on homes. But they were all redlined. If you were black, you never got in the line, so you never had the benefit of that program. I think we need to do something, I know we can't do it here, but some of the low-income housing people need to take that into consideration. But I'd like to see us measure poverty. You know, if we ask the people who come into our facility, what is your source of income and what is your income? And I think we'd be startled, well, maybe we wouldn't, at the lack of income, which really cements them in place, which is why they don't have a current tag on their car, you know, those sorts of things. And that's one of the reasons. The other, I'm wondering whether, you know, we talked this morning, I talked with Mike, friend, about the searching of inmates when they come in, the problem with, it's kind of perennial with a female police officer doing the searching. And I don't think the union regulations or we want to take on the responsibility of searching them when they come in. So maybe there's a little bit of a problem there. But I wonder whether a thermal camera, if they could be run through the thermal camera, if that's a solution or if that's not a solution. Any event, I just really want to place those thoughts in your mind and any thoughts you might have. I appreciate your leadership. We had a terrific leader before you. You are an outstanding leader to follow. I think it's a real lesson to be learned about what your education is, what your philosophy is.
One minute.
You know, that it really leads to respecting the people who are in the prison, who are in the jail, excuse me. So thanks, Mike. I just wanted to get those points in, and maybe you have 30 seconds to speak.
Regarding bail, and as that pertains relates to the racial demographics of the folks in the jail, I'm hopeful that our pre-trial reforms that we're pushing for over the course of this year will result in a more level playing field. I can't predict that. It's a hope at this point. And in regards to the searches, I think we've worked out those issues, and we do, the body scanner is in place, and we've kind of tweaked our procedures with law enforcement to make that be a little more user-friendly for everybody involved on both sides.
Great. Thanks a lot, Mike. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Just a couple of things. We were on the number of COVID cases in the facility between the staff and the population. You indicated both of those are currently in low, single digits?
Correct. And what I was, so we sometimes have to put a complete housing unit on a quarantine status. And what I can thankfully say is, what we've noticed recently, and I'll knock on this wood, is that anytime we put somebody on a quarantine, you know, we've had somebody come up symptomatic in the past, we usually ended up with a positive case, which then, when there's a positive case in the housing unit, we have to lock that housing unit down in terms of nobody new comes in, they can't transfer out to any other cases, they're not going to court for a 24-day period. The last several times we've had somebody have a fever or have other symptoms, the tests have all been negative. So those housing unit lockdowns or quarantines have only lasted for two or three days while we're waiting for the tests to be completed and the results to be received. So that has been a refreshing change.
Okay. Well, and, you know, kudos, because with the enclosed population that you have, any outbreak is challenging and dangerous.
Absolutely.
Keeping it that low is a credit to what you're doing. The personnel numbers, and they're probably in here, I just couldn't find them. I think that you have a lot in maybe enclosure four, but.
There's actually a more detailed breakdown on page seven. It's on enclosure number one.
Page seven? I'm sorry. I just looked under personnel, and I didn't see what I was looking for, which is you have authorized and actual. Where's that number?
It is, there's a chart or a table, I should say, on a chart and a table.
I see it. Okay, thank you. And that's separate from the overall personnel report, right?
Yes, yes. I'm actually probably going to be merging those two reports into one enclosure.
So your authorized is 7, 479. Your on-hand is 466, 97.3%. Again, that's a great improvement from the time you took over. And, you know, adding these classes, I think, as we can see from this graph, has made a real difference, which, correct me if I'm wrong, has that lowered the amount of overtime required?
It has. And, oh, I failed to elaborate on something I said I was going to. So relating to the increased number, like, so we have a 36% increase in maximum security inmates, that has, we, pre-pandemic, we were staffing three housing units with two officers instead of one because of the type of individuals and the risk level that were present. We've now been forced to increase that to six housing units that we're staffing with two officers because we just, the ratio of maximum security inmates has been out of whack. So that has been a driver to keep our overtime from going even lower. And hopefully, as the courts, you know, this will take months to resolve, because the courts can't catch up a year's worth of work in a month. So this will take several months to resolve, and we hope that it's not a new normal for us, and we can get back to our regular proportions of low-risk, medium-risk, maximum-risk populations. But this has, we have, the amount of, the amount of overtime that we spent in March was nearly $120,000 less than it was in December. And I think, and we know that it would be even lower if we weren't staffing these housing units during waking hours, so two shifts a day, seven days a week, are staffed with an additional officer that we didn't plan for in our staffing plan. But safety concerns dictate that we need to do it.
Well, again, kudos. Thank you for that. Thanks for this report.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? We do have a hand up on Zoom.
Hi. Louis, two minutes.
Go ahead, Louis.
3306 Bird Street. Thank you. I want to thank Commissioner Mike Boyle for commenting on the issue as to why people get criminally involved. And poverty is a factor that you can notice significance just by observing what happens to people get in trouble. My question, or my comment to that would be that you mentioned that you're working with Marcus, or you're going to work with the Nebraska legislator to measure that criteria, I guess you could say, on poverty? And then I did hear the director say, well, we can see about that in pre-trial, and I think that's great, if you can do that. But my point is that you want to get total involvement with something like that. So if you just have the pre-trial procedure, which is, would be good, but if you have the Nebraska legislator or statute looking at that, too, that kind of covers it, because if, you know, in the future, for whatever reason, locally, you're not measuring that, and the state isn't measuring it, then you're back into the same situation, I think. And I don't think that the director meant it that way, but I do want to say that you'll want to cover it in different ways so that it's maintained. I mean, the measuring of poverty and crime.
Thank you, Louis.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
I do want to follow up, just to touch on what Louis said. I appreciate the support. I think that poverty, if I could say so, I think has led to so many of our problems that we face as commissioners, you know, just across the board. And somehow, we need to get a handle on that, you know, and I think, I know you're doing quite a bit with housing and so forth, and that's extremely helpful. I think we really need to try to pry this information out of the inmates, the people who come in, who, you know, many times, people who are in there are the sole support for families, and that just happens a lot. So bail and all those things come into play again, but it's a complex problem. I know you're on top of it. What I wanted to suggest in addition to this is that there's so much of this violation of probation, excuse me, and again, I think in my mind, and I've said this many times, that we're forcing people who are disorganized like me, disorganized person who just really kind of falls into things. You don't realize how many times I show up for a meeting where the meeting has either occurred or is happening two weeks from then. So it's my fault when that happens, but it happens frequently. So anyway, what I want to suggest is that when we have these probation hearings, and they're in the courthouse, and they're getting, you know, show up again or wherever they are, probation office, I'd like to see us, and ask me if this is correct, if possible, instead of coming to the courthouse for a hearing at 10:00 a.m. or whatever it may be, what if we sent them to the probation offices that we offer, you know, we pay for, by the state of Nebraska's and South Omaha, and I believe there's still one in North Omaha, what if we were to take a look at that and had them go there in their own neighborhoods, so to speak, instead of coming downtown and trying to find a place to park and all the rest of it that goes with it, and then going through a courthouse, which is really intimidating and frankly, can be hostile? I really would like to look into that, so I'd ask you to put that on your plate as well, okay?
Sure. I can certainly reach out to probation. I'm not, I know that they've also developed virtual capabilities during the pandemic, so that may be one of those, like I said, those lessons and practices that didn't occur to you prior to the pandemic that you find value, you know, to having ongoing.
And virtual's kind of tough if you don't have a computer, you know? You may not have one.
But they could at least maybe do that from the probation office. Just to let the commissioners know, and I'll ask the researchers from UNO if they would be willing to come do this presentation for you next month, but probably right now, as I'm speaking to you, they are presenting data from our department to the American Jail Association's National Conference, which is being held virtually this year. And to refresh the memories of those commissioners who were here for a few years and to inform our newer commissioners, we did a study on approximately 5,000 individuals who were booked into the jail, I believe in 2016 or 17. And we asked them everything, anything from traumatic brain injury to their income, to their drug and alcohol history, you know, just a very thorough, it was around a 90-question interview that we did for about 5,000 people. And now, and we identified characteristics, you know, among that group as to what was most common for folks, characteristics associated with incarceration. Now we have the data on following them as far as recidivism goes for a couple of years, and that's what's being presented today at the National American Jail Association Conference. And it's some very interesting stuff. I got a preview of it last week, and like I said, they're presenting it this morning, and I'll ask if they will present at the next Board of Corrections so that you will have a good overview of what we found to be true in Douglas County.
That sounds like a great idea. Thanks, Mike.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Director Myers, and we look forward to that report because Commissioner Boyle and I also had it added in there, that brain injury piece of it, and I think it would be of interest to know the results of that as well. But I also wanted you to talk at the next time about the fact that our social workers are embedded within our facility and do work with our visitors to make sure or find out what the issues are that could, we could potentially help them once they begin their discharge back into the community. So I think it'll be a good, good report, so thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Larry?
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Just some brief comments, but heartfelt comments. Mike, it just makes me cringe when I hear somebody say, we need to pry it out of people. And to hear Mike say that we interviewed, got information from 5,000 people. I have a grandson that's now a little over 21, and he's been involved in the system. I was involved in the system when I was a young person. You don't share information. You have privacy laws. You're not allowed to do that under the First Amendment or whatever, state law, city law, county law. We're just not allowed to do that. But to hear you people say that, when I've attempted to help my grandson at all levels of this, including testifying at the State House, it's always, wow, we're the experts. We know the answers, and we know the program, we know the best practices. A grandparent is not allowed to give input to anybody. They don't want it. They will not take it. They will not use it. But they're not the ones that traveled different places in the country to get information from the experts. They didn't want to hear the information from the experts. They want to spend their own money duplicating what a lot of experts have already said and proved. So it just makes me cringe to say, government still wants to pry it out of them. Think twice before we say it. Think more than twice before we do it. This is a republic. It is not a democracy. And, excuse me, but we do have maybe a civil war coming, Mike. The World Herald had an article in the paper on Sunday that everybody should read. I won't, you won't let me read it here today during comments, but it points out that we are at odds with each other so bad that possibly there will be a civil war coming. And people that are busy, like you people, need to start looking at the whole forest instead of just a couple of trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. We will, I now ask for a motion to adjourn and go back, from the Board of Corrections, and go back into the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Commissioner Morgan?
Voting yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Commissioner Morgan voting virtually, all their commissioners voting in person.
On the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, we will move to the consent agenda, items A through G. Please note, item H has been removed from the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion, commotion, motion by Commissioner Mike Boyle, and seconded by Commissioner Chris Rogers. Commissioner Maureen Boyle, you have a question?
I think, so yeah, just looking at the surplus properties on A, I don't know if we can talk about something on that, can we move that off?
Sure, I don't think Eric is, can you tell us what you're speci, oh, Teresa would be able to, there we go.
Teresa York County Attorney's Office, I'll give it a go. The surplus property on the agenda under consent letter A, this is a, this is a resolution that the purchasing agent puts on the county board, asking for the authority to go ahead and dispose of surplus property. There's a statute called the County Purchasing Act, and it lays out for the purchasing agent the process to go ahead and do that. And if I look at that resolution, I suspect that it's going to say to do it pursuant to law. And so what he's going to do once authorized is he'll go ahead and just follow the County Purchasing Act and dispose of that property.
Okay, I think I just need clarification, the bottom line is, the information we received on the, in the board packet wasn't real explanatory about what's being disposed of, and then how the, like, do they sell it? Do they just give it to coworkers? I mean, it just wasn't real clear, so I'm just not familiar enough with how it's disposed of.
Sure, and there's a, the statute provides a little bit different procedure depending on the value of the item, and this is from memory. And so I'd be happy, if I may, I'd be happy to send you the statute and portion, if I may do that after a county board, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
That'd be helpful, okay.
Yes, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
I spoke to Eric, and of course, I told him he didn't need to come today, but anyway, what he told me was, I said, the description here is not clear. And what I want to know is, as a county commissioner, what are we agreeing to surplus out at, you know, at a cost of $699, so many of these things? It turns out what this is, is the refurbishing of the 911 Center some time ago, and this is old chairs and so forth that are, that are being put up, they'll be available for sale to the public, public auction will occur. And so this is what, this is what it's all about. But I told him, I said, we need to know what it is we're voting on, so if you could just simply tell us, instead of listing all this, you could just say we have 312 chairs worth $699 apiece, these are from the 911 Center, that's what we really need to know, what it is we're voting on here. So that's what he's going to do in the future. So, but again, I did tell him not to bother to come down, so that's why he wasn't here. Thank you very much, Teresa.
You bet.
Thank you. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, there has been a motion and a second, please vote.
Voting yes.
Chair Borges. Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner Morgan voting virtually, all their commissioners voting in person.
We will move to citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda? Larry?
Thank you. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette, Omaha, Nebraska. I won't try to read this, but I will submit it. What set me off this time was over the weekend, an article that talked about reeducating us, all of us, because of systemic racism, et cetera. If you carefully read that article in the World Herald, from the other side of the microphone, it indicts all of us, not just me, that all of the legislative bodies that make the decisions. But the tone of that article, the tone of that article was very accusatory. That attitude is often called out of order. But it goes on. And other people with more power than I had were allowed to express the, what's really needed here is to get back, not to reeducating us all, but to get back to the first principles of this country. Just educating the people as to what was not taught to them about our founding fathers, and how this country was founded, we're being lied to every day about how this country came about. The short story is, people left other countries, particularly England, to get away from religious persecution. Some of those people were slaves. Some of those people were white slaves. Some of them were indentured servants. And some of those indentured servants went on to became slaves of black plantation owners. You do not hear that because the national media doesn't want you to hear that. It needs to be talked about. So instead of reeducating me, go back and reeducate people that weren't taught by the public school system about those things. We weren't founded in 1619, and neither was slavery. It goes back to the Bible, for God's sakes. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda?
Yes, on Zoom?
Okay, Louise, go ahead.
Thank you. I get five minutes?
Yes.
Thank you. I want to comment on what Larry just said because of the social unrest of last year and this year. Mr. Store, forget that the slave trade began in recent history, centuries actually. And also, on the founding of our country, I support that, I support.
We lost you, Louise.
Yeah. And one thing that I've found was that when the Declaration of Independence was written by the Committee of Five, and a list of, of, in the Declaration, there's a list of grievances, and also promises that were removed by the Committee of the Whole, basically the body that approved the Declaration of Independence, that was slavery. Benjamin Franklin and actually Thomas Jefferson and the committees wanted to make sure that slavery was addressed, and it wasn't at the Declaration of Independence, and it wasn't addressed for a long time. And the ramifications of all these things that happened during that time have been compounded by history. And what we're trying to do is help people out, help the ones that have been disadvantaged because of racist setups. And I don't think Larry, nobody's blaming Larry in particular about what has happened to people that he doesn't know, people that we don't know, but are with us. And that's the black community, minorities, and persecuted people, and in this side of the world. We're focused on this side of the world, we're focused on Douglas County. And I commend the board for many things that they've, you've done recently to lay it out and say, this is wrong. Mike Boyle does it, Mr. Kavanaugh as well, and your various resolutions that are supported by the Board of Commissioners are addressing these things. So that's why I'm encouraged to attend your meetings, because I think you guys do try to help the community. But anyway, I, what I want to talk to you guys about, looking at the agenda, is I was surprised when I saw the Omaha Tourism Group being placed on presentations. And I also want to compliment Maureen Boyle for doing that, because I think that's proactive. It's not my favorite topic. It's, it's something that during this time would tell me that we're reopening, that we can get back to normal. I haven't gotten the vaccine, and I did want to get the Johnson &amp; Johnson, but I'll see what other vaccines I can get. But with the tourism, I want to repeat my criticism that they're forward, they're focused on tourism. They're focused on tourism, and they're not focused on.
One minute, Louise.
The community, which is fine. So a word of caution that when you deal with focus groups, and especially nonprofits, they're simply focused on their mission. And that's what they get paid to do, that's what they want to do. And so I think that taking care of your committees is important. I hope that you add more committees since you removed. I wanted maybe clarify that comment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Louise. We will move to committees, the first being the Finance Committee, Commissioners PJ Morgan and Commissioner Mike Friend. We have the budget report as presented, is there anything you'd like to add? Our PJ?
I don't think so.
Okay, Mike, okay, thank you. Next is our human resource, well, under Criminal Justice, their minutes are posted for that committee meeting that was held March 30th. Under Human Resources, it's the Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service as Presented. And then Legislative Items, I do just want to make reference to a couple of things. I have watched the legislature here quite intently over the course of time that I'd been laid up, and I want to talk about a couple of things. LB 644 has moved through, it was Ben Hanson, Senator Hanson's bill, and it was about a postcard that they are mandating counties to send out to all property owners with information about where their taxes go. They are also mandating us to hold a public hearing with all other local jurisdictions that will, it's basically that when you don't raise your mill levy, but you're taking in your additional revenue from the increased evaluations, they're saying we are not being truthful, we're being sneaky, it was an awful debate to listen to, that we're being dishonest, we're not being accountable, we're not being transparent, so they're going to make us do this by sending out this postcard, listing all the information, and holding this joint public hearing with all of the other taxing authorities. And it's a very date specific, August 20th through September 20th, I believe, September 27th, it's supposed to be held at 6:30 p.m. And so I asked the question of some of the senators, are you going to send out a postcard and hold a public hearing with the local governing bodies when you force unfunded mandates and tax shifts on us? So again, we'll, we'll have some issues with that. The other issue that I see is that when I got on the board, it was clear that we had not ever approved our budget before July 1. And I had issues with that, and by state law, we don't have to. But I had issues with that because I couldn't see how we could start a new fiscal year and spend money for, do I, August, September, three months without an approved budget. It just blew me away. And so we started to approve our budget by the end of June, or at least by the 1st of July. So this will, I'm asking the question of them, are you telling us not to approve a budget until after September 27th? And so, anyway, that's something that we're still watching very intently, and also embedded in that is a 9% tax refund interest bill. It was an amendment that was added, and it was for any refund or claim due under this section, interest shall accrue on the unpaid balance at the rate of 9% beginning 30 days after the date of entry on the final non-appealable order or other action approving the refund. My understanding of the history of this is there was an issue with a county, one county that was actually the reason this was brought forward, that had not paid, could not pay because they didn't have the funds, to pay someone their refund. Now, I'm not saying that's right, but again, we're being lumped in, all other counties now are going to have to abide by this 9% increase in interest accrual if we don't pay it in a timely manner. So I bring these up because, again, watching it, you know, we all know that we, a lot of times, in the legislature play defense rather than offense, and this year, it's one of horrendous defense that we are faced with. And just to name a couple other real quick ones, Senator Michaela Kavanaugh had brought up a, creating a special committee to review the Eastern Service Area Child Welfare Contract Special Investigative and Oversight Committee of the Legislature, and you all know, especially Commissioner Rogers, has brought up the issues that are kind of hanging out there with this contract that the state has with St. Francis. And so the committee will be very instrumental in trying to come up with answers to a lot of the questions that I think we have, as well as the legislature has. I will say, one of the things I was just surprised, very disappointed in the actions of the legislature, was this was a senator who brought this to the body, and in the end, was not put on her own committee. And I just think that's, I just think it's outright wrong. I do commend her for bringing this forward because, again, this contract does have impacts on us as Douglas County. And again, nine, four out of the nine are only from the Eastern Service Area, which I also think is a slap in the face to Douglas County. So anyway, it's been quite eye-opening to watch. One of the other, it's a good thing, is our Mental Health Crisis Hotline. Task Force will be created for implementation of the 988 number nationwide. That is phenomenal, exciting, I can't wait, because it's so, so important that we try to get a different route for people to ask for help, rather than just having to call law enforcement to do so. So exciting, watching that. And the other big thing that, again, I wish for all of you to think about this, is there will be funds, and especially Commissioner Rogers and I have had a discussion about this, is the broadband. There's going to be about $20 million the first year, and 20 million the next year, through a grant application process with the state, to ask for funds to fund. to ask for funds to fund areas within your county that do not have good broadband accessibility, or don't have broadband. And so if there's areas within your county, please let me know if you're interested in applying. I have had conversations virtually with Public Service Commissioner Tim Schram to look into this. And so again, if there's areas that you know of that need attention, please let us know because we'd like to apply for some of those funds. So that's a good thing as well. So those are kind of the pointers, or the bills that I wanted to point out. But again, we'll continue to watch and voice our opinions on some of these. Because as you know, I had Marcos put together and gave you all the list of bills if passed would be unfunded mandates or shifts onto our local taxpayers, which again, are their taxpayers as well. They talk about us being not accountable or transparent. Well, you know, they can tout what they're doing in terms of reducing property taxes at that level, but they're really not because they're shifting it to us at the local level. And so it's frustrating. So with that, we'll keep eye and we'll report back what we find in the coming weeks. Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Christian Borgensen, I really appreciate your bringing this up. I got to admit that I received this email from Marcos and it resulted in about two and a half hours of reading, reading the entire thing and what those bills all were. It was pretty bizarre, but I enjoyed it in a strange way. One of the things that really jumped out at me was when you talked about the judge's pension fund being, you know, I mean, I don't know, they're trying to get it up to 100% pretty soon, which is pretty remarkable because a lot of us on the ground here don't, you know, we suffered tremendous losses when things happened. And so we don't have that kind of benefit. But in any event, they decided to raise the filing fees so that people are paying about, I don't know what the percentage is, and I don't want to guess, but it's quite substantial to pay the pensions of the judges. And one of the other things that's never really discussed much is the fact that the county attorney, when he or she across the state, in our case, he, files a charge against someone who's accused of a felony, we have to pay a filing fee. I mean, we pay a filing fee and it goes to the pensions for the judges. And we had a bill in that, I don't think got out of committee, we tried to stop that, have it be funded some other way, have the state contribute or something else. In any event, the fund is now, I think we're spending in property tax dollars, over $600,000 in filing fees. And so when notorious people are brought to trial, we've paid the filing fees and it comes right out of property taxes, which is pretty insane. You know, if you're going to do it. And then they turned around and raised the contribution 100%. So if you talk about people who are irresponsible, maybe it's respectfully, maybe it's them. And what's really aggravating, I'm going to ask Joe to put that study together again, that shows that justice in Douglas County is costing the property taxpayers $300 million. Now, that's the Omaha Police, that's the sheriff, that's the court system, that's the bailiffs, that's corrections, it's everything. It's $300 million. And the idea that they're going to help property taxpayers by giving them $17 a year, give it back, doesn't work. What they ought to be doing, and I stood up in the back of the room and yelled at the governor purposely, because I was in the back of the room, Governor Heinemann, I yelled, "Pay for the justice system." And the entire county people jumped up and applauded because that's what's a drain, the biggest drain on us. It's like 60 cents out of every dollar. And if they would pay that, pay for services instead of giving a $17 check to a taxpayer, really, that's no property tax relief for them at all. What they ought to be doing is taking away some of the services we have to pay for. And finally, the remark I want to make is about the fact that, you know, on broadband, I have a different opinion of that. Part of the, part of the good things about living out in the country are that you're out in the country, away from people and whatever it is you enjoy out there by yourself. One of the bad things is you don't have some of the services you get if you live in 16th and Douglas. And that is broadband and all the restaurants and places to get good food and all the rest of it. Those are things, those are trade-offs. And if anybody's going to provide broadband to people who are out in the country, it ought to be the companies. They are flush and with money. I mean, if you think A and T and T is hurting, I don't know, I just don't agree. And they know how to raise rates. Now, look at what's happened to YouTube Television. It started out at $34 a month, it's now $69 a month. That's a national company, of course. But the point is, those companies have the money and the P S C needs to go after them and say, "You need to use that money." Lastly, I want to say with President Biden doing all these things that's trying to help with infrastructure, and that's one of them, I think we need to get our two cents in. We don't have a lot to speak with
One minute.
because we have an entire Republican delegation, with all due respect to Larry. But anyway, we have all Republican delegation, so it's a little difficult to, although he would listen, I think, if we asked for it out here. After all, he did carry this district. So we're going to try, I know some people are very close to the president here in Omaha, and I'm going to talk to them about it and we'll see what we can do. But anyway, I just really think it's time the Legislature finds out what we have to do. And look at the Commission of Industrial Relations. If we go down and offer the Corrections Department, which has over a $30 million payroll now, if we go down and say, "We'll give you 1%," they're going to go to the C I R and they're going to get a lot more than that. And who has to pay the taxpayers, property taxpayers in Douglas County? Not the state. So why don't they tell the C I R to knock it off? I mean, what are you going to do? Not pay them? I mean, what are the choices? So anyway, we're kind of in a tight spot and I think the rubber's going to hit the road with this 3% lid.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I agree with the sentiments that Commissioner Borgensen and Commissioner Boyle put out there regarding the wasteful way that the state is managing finances and then pushing them on property taxpayers at the local level. For instance, the scandalous contract with St. Francis that resulted in 100 million or more in wasted dollars because the bidding was rigged so that the lowest bidder, which wasn't the best bid, got the contract and then doubled the cost to the state so that they exceeded the bid that they beat out after the fact that the Ricketts administration is responsible for. This is scandalous waste of taxpayers' dollars that then result in us assuming burdens here at the local level that our property taxpayers are supposed to bear. This needs to be investigated and I join with the colleagues on this board to commend Senator Kavanaugh for bringing this up. And you're right, it is wrong that the committee decided not to put her, who brought this issue to them, on the committee. But it's an example of how partisan politics can play out to waste money. And I'm glad that we have a bipartisan kind of a consensus here on this issue. I also agree with Commissioner Boyle's point regarding the Biden administration's attempts to get this country stood up again through the Assistance Act, through CARES, and now with the oncoming Infrastructure Act. I got information from the White House recently regarding the impact of that on us here in Nebraska, which is hundreds of millions of dollars to fix our roads and bridges and transportation infrastructure that we need to do. It's overdue and it will put people to work. And we have unemployment rampant and we have infrastructure that's falling apart. These are all things that we should get behind. And I'm sorry to say that our congressional delegation has been woeful in their support for these assistance during this time of COVID. So I think, you know, maybe we should think about going on record in support of the most recent American Rescue Act and the upcoming Infrastructure Act that is doing nothing but helping us here in Douglas County and helping our property taxpayers who are burdened during this pandemic. So I think this is a rare moment of consensus here on the board, but it's good to have it. And I think going forward, this is going to result in great progress for our community and property tax relief for the property owners of Douglas County. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I really appreciate Mr. Kavanaugh's remarks. I think they're right on point. And it is time for us to talk about coming together on these issues and it'll be, it'll be a thing we should do, I think. I forgot something I wanted to mention and I've been, my wife taught me this a long time ago and I learned it and I've lived it. I am, I just really wonder whether Commissioner Michaela Kavanaugh, or excuse me, Senator Commissioner, excuse me, Senator Michaela Kavanaugh would have been criticized for being angry if she were a man. You know, when someone expresses anger, and she certainly was entitled to it, and I thought she did it in an eloquent way and made it really clear how she felt about it, and I agree totally, it's absolutely a disgrace that she would be kept off that committee. She raises a lot of hell in a very polite way and sometimes it's a little bit vigorous. I totally support what Senator Kavanaugh, Michaela Kavanaugh did. And I don't think she would have been criticized by the young Republicans or anyone else if she were a man. And I really resent that because it's, one of the problems we're facing constantly is that we we just don't treat people equally and we should respect everyone, particularly when they're being as sincere as she was.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. And I can tell you from watching it, there were plenty of males who raised their voices and pounded their fist and were not criticized at all. So being a woman, I would concur that there is a different treatment. Regardless of partisan politics, there's a gender issue, I think. And it was very obvious and came to light during those debates. So you're right. I did want to say real quickly, though, that Senator Hunt, Senator Matt Williams, Senator DeBoer, they came to our defense during some of the debate where we were getting criticized as local officials, basically not knowing what we were doing and not being transparent or accountable. And it was really quite ugly, in my opinion. They actually came to our defense and I appreciate that as well. I don't think there's one person on this board that comes walking in the door or out the door on a daily basis saying, "Hey, let's raise taxes on our taxpayers. Hey, let's do these evil things. Hey, let's not be transparent or accountable." We have been a body that has been the most, and I will put us up against anybody across this entire state. We are the, we are the board who has been the most transparent and the most accountable during our budgeting process. Our books are open, our staff is available, we make ourselves available to answer any and all questions that arise during our budget process. I have spoke to groups, spoken to groups about our budget and there have been additional questions and I have given them additional information on our budget. So we are an open book, we are an open process. And I do take, do take very, very to heart the hurtful comments that were made about us not being so. Commissioner Boyle, I'm glad you brought up the bill about the increase in court costs because there was good debate in saying that the pension of the judges is already funded at 97.6%. There is no reason whatsoever to increase these costs at this time to fund that pension liability. I, again, will watch it. Our lobbyists, Sean Kelly and Julia Plucker, have done absolutely amazing work in this hard time of being a lobbyist when you can't be outside the window calling him out for debate over issues. But they've been on top of it and Marcos has been available, actually almost 24/7 with questions and comments during this legislative process and we appreciate the work that they've done. So anyway, we'll keep you posted. There is good and bad, but we will keep you posted on where we go from here. Larry? And then I see Louis has his hand up as well. So Larry?
Thank you. And thank you for your comments, all of you. I largely agree with you. I've forgotten some of it. But this state and this city is not nonpartisan, no matter what they claim. And I get tired of hearing that. They proclaim nonpartisan and a one-horse legislature, excuse me, house, I really meant horse. But there's a lot of dirty politics and your comment about the the gender differentiation is probably true. That needs to get stopped, yes. But who stops it? Yeah. I have no control on that. If it's illegal, I have no control on that. I can't arrest anybody. We have laws and we have resolutions and proclamations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But we don't have anybody that has the guts to go after the people that are being insinuated committing these crimes. Somewhere in our Legislature bodies and law enforcement are the people that have to go after them. They have to be named, they have to be accused, don't they? But we've gotten into this habit of we're going to insinuate everybody is guilty of this and guilty of that. But we will not name the person and we will not personally file charges or a complaint. Now, this infrastructure thing, please be a little careful of this. I've been accused of being uninformed. We don't sign bills and pass bills without reading them simply because a non-elected progressive expert said it's a best practice or whatever. There happens to be a lot of fraud and corruption in that bill. I don't expect you guys to rubber stamp stuff like that. And it's quite possible that some of these Chinese companies are going to get the money to do the work instead of some Americans. Talk about poverty? Think about that. And property taxes? You don't think that that's going to somehow affect property taxes? Maybe because you think you won't have to spend money raising our tax? It comes around, it goes around and it comes around. It will somehow do property taxes. And that discriminates against me because I own property. Which may be declared blighted any day and some developer can put up a new apartment building on my property. And I think if you read the comments to a lot of articles in Weekend's newspaper, there's a lot of citizens like me that do not understand T I F. The transparency that is not there implies to us that that is a big scam against me and my property tax. If it is not, then our so-called transparent officials need to own up to it and explain it in here in more than five minutes if necessary. And by the way, I'm going to end with this. I've been called out of order. I don't mind it. But when Louis sat there on, right in front of everybody and started talking about an item on the agenda, you weren't listening or you would have called him out of order. Because he went back to talking about something already discussed. And I don't think anywhere before that any of these bodies have let another citizen call out another citizen that testified just before him or commented. Maybe that's okay, maybe it isn't. Is that a parliamentary rule or is that a Roberts rule? Those things, I mean, I've witnessed that here between you people and your other commissioners. Some of it's funny and some of it isn't. Because you all break the rules. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Louis?
Yes, Louis, you manage 3306 Bird Street. I want, I had a question on the broadband item that you brought up, Commissioner Borgensen.
Go ahead.
I'll look into it, but it sounds like it's a I'll, I'll look into it, but it sounds like it's, it's an idea. I'm wondering if, when they say broadband, are they talking about wireless broadband as well? Is that something that has been discussed?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Great. I, that's basically it. I don't want Larry to get worked up about what I say.
Okay. Thank you, Luis. With that, there's no other legislative items. We do have need for executive session, but I just want to point, make a couple of points. First, I want to thank Commissioner Rogers as vice chair for stepping up during the time that I was not here in person. And thank you all for your well wishes and text messages. I'm looking at Commissioner Mike Boyle. They were, they were the best and I looked, looked forward to them. But I also wanted to take a moment and say how great it is to see Commissioner Mike Boyle looking so great. I've been thinking of you and sending positive vibes through our telephone and you look great and I'm glad to see you here. We'll, we'll keep sending those your way. And then our mental health listening sessions, I'm going to end on a positive note because this is so exciting. We have those set up. Our first one is this Thursday. It's an invitation one that will be with our Region 6 network providers that have contracts through the region to provide mental health services. And what we'll do is we'll, Patty Jurjevich, our region program administrator, will spend a couple of minutes at the beginning of the listening session to go over what those services are. And then we will listen for the entire time of our listening session, that's why they're called that, from our network providers and what they think their one to three priorities are that we should be looking at in Douglas County when it comes to mental health. The following week, it's an invitation one for community, mental health providers and organizations that want to give us their opinion of what their priorities are that we should be looking at. These again are folks that are not Region 6 network providers. So if there's anyone out there that you would like to get an invite to that listening session, please let me know. And the third one will be to the general public and that will be open to anybody and everybody. We will have to see how many join in terms of if we have to alter the time or extend the time or have another one. But we're very excited to have these scheduled and for us to be able to listen to not only experts, to organizations, but to our general public on what we as Douglas County should look at in terms of mental health as we move forward. And then lastly, if we do have executive session for legal advice and litigation purposes, but before, after we adjourn and before we go to executive session, or not adjourn, but adjourn to executive session, could we all just stand in front of the dais here for Leah to take a picture of us with our National Association of Counties Government Awareness Month resolution so we can get that sent in? With that, we again do need a motion to go to executive session for legal advice and litigation. Motion by Commissioner Mike Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Chris Rogers. Please vote. We will adjourn to, or move to room 903 for the executive session. And then Dan will come back down to the office here, entryway for adjournment. Okay?
Voting yes.
Okay. Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner Morgan voting virtually, other commissioners voting in person.
All right. So just go in front of the spot here so we can get a quick picture.